If I could have your attention, please. We will get started. Call the role, Ms. Whitby.
Ross.
Here.
White.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Fauch.
Here.
Height.
Here.
Witcher.
Red.
Gorman, Mr. President, just honor.
Thank you very much. Alderman, Fauch is going to introduce our guest. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Please rise while I introduce Dr. Candice Barron. She is the Senior Pastor for Gardner Memorial United Methodist Church, and she's just so good they have to share her as a Senior Pastor at the Amboy United Methodist Church.
Let us pray. Oh God, so sober and with all creation, walk alongside us as we navigate through rapidly changing worlds. Help us to see how the work we do will help empower others to grow and change and become better, as it also helps our own lives. Let us never strive for anything less than what you have envisioned our lives to be. Bless the business and the work of our city. Help us to make a difference in the lives of the people that depend on us to make good decisions. Bless our families, and always invite us to serve by your side and in your kingdom. Equip us, Lord, to serve you well in the Spirit and the power of God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Fauch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Thank you. We have two special calls. One special call, two pieces of legislation tonight. Ms. Whitby, you want to call those?
From Jason Carter, City Attorney, regarding Special Meeting of the North Little Rock City Council at 6:00 PM on Monday, March 14, 2016. Our members of the North Little Rock City Council, the purpose of this email is to advise you that Mayor Smith has called a special meeting in the North Little Rock City Council at 6:00 PM on Monday, March 14, 2016 at City Hall, Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. R-1650, a resolution appropriating additional funds for the completion of the Drainage Rehabilitation Project at Dicky Stevens Ballpark. R-1651, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a lease agreement with Argentico LLC for vacant property located at 122 East Fourth Street. Pursuant to Section 2-48 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, all members were notified.
Thank you. Let's call R-1650.
R-1650, a resolution appropriating additional funds for completion of the Drainage Rehabilitation Project at Dicky Stevens Ballpark.
Second.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Fauch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Thank you very much. R-1651, please.
R-1651, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a lease agreement with Argentico LLC for vacant property located at 122 East Fourth Street.
If I have a motion.
Some move. Do I have a second now? I'll explain.
Have a question.
I have a comment.
Who's the, who is Argentico?
Who is, oh, that's Harold Tenenbaum and Jack Grunfest.
Okay.
What this is, is, you know, I think I've talked to you about a month or two ago about that private property and spending some money on it because it's heavily used. I think I've got a picture or two, Mr. Billings, if you can throw up those pictures. This is a very heavily, this is at night, at 6:45 PM on a Friday night. During the day, there's a lot of, that's at 2:00 in the middle of the afternoon, there's still 40 cars there, 12:30 at lunch, and this was before, I think these were taken before the hub even opened up full-time. So, you know, whether we, you know, I mean, we started out a number of years ago developing an entertainment district, and by golly, we have one now, and parking issues are, you know, a good problem to have, I guess. We anticipate, I'd like to spend a little money, I don't know how much, on fixing that lot up. We feel like we can rent it out during arena events for about $4,000. We're going to pay $8,000 a year, so basically net is going to be around $4,000 a year. I think we have to have it to service our downtown. So, that was the reason that I brought this to you tonight.
Question.
We have legislation coming up later on tonight to suspend sales of city property for a specific period of time. What makes this any different than the other properties that we're holding? Is this a necessity that we expedite this now?
Well, number one, we don't own this property. We're just leasing it. And the other property is the property around and behind where the plaza is going to go. So, two different.
That's what I'm trying to make sure of. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, Ms. Ross?
Who will manage the parking during special events?
During special events, we'll use Main Street, Clay Smith, his company, whoever manages all of our other property.
Okay. When they submit that, do they submit it by lot so that we will know how much income's coming from each lot?
Yeah, we have all that.
We do have that?
Yeah. Yeah, they've got it over in Commerce. It's off the bed.
Because I'd like to see it in a year, so, just to see how we're doing.
Okay. Any other questions on the motion?
On the motion, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Fauch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a presentation tonight. Tad Bohannon, who's the General Manager of Central Arkansas Water, is going to talk to us about water, and he's got some of his commissioners here. I'm sure he'll want to introduce them.
Good evening, Mayor Alderman. I am delighted to be here. I'm Tad Bohannon, Chief Executive Officer of Central Arkansas Water for almost two months now. Still in training. We do have three commissioners here today. We have, oh, four. Okay, great. Perfect timing. Just sitting down is Jay Hartman, who's a Commissioner from Little Rock. In the second row here, we have John Braun, who's also a Commissioner from Little Rock. Next to him is Carmen Smith, who's from North Little Rock, and then, I don't know that you know the next gentleman, but that's former Mayor Eddie Powell, who is also a Commissioner from North Little Rock. I'm delighted that you all are here today. With that, I have a short presentation on some things going on at Central Arkansas Water, and I'd certainly be happy to take any questions, but I'll just move right along and keep this as short as possible. So, one of the first things I want to talk about is lead. It's been in the press a lot lately. There's lots of questions. The public has questions, and I'm sure you all have questions, too. The Flint water crisis has brought it to everybody's mind, but what I want to tell you is it's not an issue here. We have it under control. I can skip the rest of it, but I'll give you just a little bit more detail on it, all right? And that lead pipe comes into the water system through primarily service lines, and that's the line from the main to the water meter, or from the water meter to the house. And I can tell you that when lead comes, when our water leaves the water treatment plants, there is no detectable lead in our water. So, it is, there's nothing there. And as it travels through the pipes, at times it has a tendency to pick up lead either out of the pipe or out of the fixtures even in the home. And there are certain steps that can be taken to reduce that ability. And there's a whole lot of characteristics that impact whether or not lead leaches out of the pipes and gets into the water, and its pH and temperature and alkalinity and all these things, all right? But we take the steps necessary to adjust and control and maintain the integrity of the water as it flows through the pipes. And the biggest thing we do is, that is the last protection, is we add phosphates. And by adding phosphates to the water, it creates a barrier between the water and the lead in the pipes so that the water and the lead don't interact, all right? And what they did, or at least what's been reported that they did in Flint and makes the biggest distinction, is they tried to save money and they stopped adding phosphates. And when they stopped adding phosphates, the water started eating away at the pipes and then it produced the lead from the pipes, and that's how they created their problem. And now they're starting to add phosphates again and trying to return the lead to a good quality. But we have never stopped. We've been adding it since before the lead and copper rules were even in place. Little Rock Municipal Water Works and North Little Rock, prior to the creation of Central Arkansas Water, were making sure that the phosphates were there to protect the water and the lead and to keep it safe and separate, all right? So, we go along from there. Just so you know, there is a lead and copper rule. The lead and copper rule is promulgated by the EPA, and it's what tells us what's safe, all right? It does, it doesn't, that there cannot be any lead, that's not it, but there are action levels where you have to take and make action. Now, even for the EPA, the definition of what's safe in lead has changed over time. And if you look at the slide, there's some different figures up there, but for instance, even back in 1991, the pipe and the fixtures could be made up of 8% lead. And if you come all the way forward down to 2011, it's .25% weighted average lead quantity. So, the EPA, over years, has been ratcheting down the lead that could even be in the pipes and be available for there. So, how do we deal with it? We monitor, okay? And we monitor for the lead in the pipe by, we look at the areas where there's the greatest probability of lead being in the pipe, and we pick out a sample, and we distribute to those homeowners with their consent a lead monitoring kit. And they take that lead monitoring kit, they actually pull the sample, and then that sample is turned over to the Arkansas Department of Health that tests it. We don't test it. We can't, we can't play with the numbers. We aren't the person, we aren't the entity saying, "Okay, whoops, things are a little bit off, well, we'll just kind of mess with this here," or "Won't report this." It's all reported by the Arkansas Department of Health, and all that information is publicly available. Now, if the lead ever reaches 15 parts per billion, which is .015 parts per million that you see up there, are 15 parts per billion, then we have to take action, all right? And that's for the 90th percentile. So, you look at all the samples, if you look at 90% of them, if it's more than 15 parts per billion, then we have to take the action. Even that action is just public notice and this type of awareness. Here are our tests going back all the way to 1992, all right? And where 15 parts per billion is the action, when you look at the 90th percentile, our numbers are .001, .002, less than detectable. We have a few up there, .04. If you drop all the way down to June 2013, you see that one outlier on the very high part that's .116. And again, remember, the homeowner takes the sample. So, when that one outlier came out, it was reported to us, we went out and re-sampled, and it came back in at .003. So, there was an outlier that when the, and there were many instances where the contamination could come from. We don't know where it was, but we went and investigated and we looked at it. And so, we are well within the EPA guidelines and well below the parameters for taking any action, and that's showing that CAW is being responsible in looking at the lead and making sure that it's, that the water's safe to drink, okay? So, what are the differences from Flint? We have a high-quality water source. Been in the paper a lot, but we've worked hard to protect our high-quality water source, and we do a good job with that. We've had a consistent treatment scheme to maintain the corrosion. We've consistently monitored with very low detection levels. We have the voluntary compliance, and we keep looking at that. And the Arkansas Department of Health performs our tests, not us, so you know that the results are good. Now, just so you all know that this is something that's kind of in my forefront and something we focused on, one of the first things, well, I was appointed to this position on January 20th. On January 21st, it snowed. So, the first thing I did was I closed the office. So, I'm the greatest CEO ever when my first action ever was to close the office for all the employees, all right? The second thing I did was on Monday morning, that was on a Friday, on Monday morning at 10:00, we had a lead meeting, and we got all everybody together, and we said, "Okay, what's our status? Where are we? What's our condition?" And we started looking at all the status of our pipes and what have you, and I said, "Okay, we need to confirm all this." And so, we have been out, our crews have been out, we've been looking at the hot, the areas where there's the most likelihood for lead service lines. And we've been doing random tests, because we think that most of them have been replaced, but you don't know until you confirm. So, we've been digging up pipes in everybody's front yard to look, to make sure that there's no lead service lines. And just so you all know, we found a few, but we've tested over 200, and we've found about 4% are lead. And so, now we're developing a plan for how do we replace those service lines? Even with the good numbers that we show, we want to make sure that the customers and the public knows that there's water safe. And so, we're looking at how do we maintain the highest quality and looking to replace those lead service lines so, as we find them, so that we can approach, keep that issue safe. All right? So, we'll keep moving forward. This is our testing year. We test every three years now because our compliance is so good. 2016 is our compliance year. We're even going to expand our monitoring, just to make sure that we're doing a random sample. Let's make our random sample big enough to make sure that we know that we're finding the problems, if there's any, and make sure that we address them. Don't think there's going to be, but we are going to expand our sample. If any individual customers have concerns, the numbers are up there, that they can call our Water Quality Department, they can call the Arkansas Department of Health and ask them, or they can call their physician and ask their physician if they have any questions about lead and the possible effects of lead poisoning. I flew through that, right? Can I talk any faster? Any questions about lead? Yes, ma'am. All right, I guess the...
I have two questions. One is, how will residents know there's increased testing going on? Is there anything that they should be aware of?
We will send out letters to increase pool to the people that have the possibility of, or that there's a high likelihood that they might have. These are older homes built prior to 1930, so it's a limited landfill site, because they stopped using lead service lines at that point. So, we will send out letters to them, and then those that receive the letters volunteer to participate in the study, and they volunteer, and then we deliver them the lead sample kit at that time.
I have one other question. If people use one of those filters that you sit on your counter or attach to your faucet, Brita, or something like that, does that remove lead? Do you know?
You want my official, non-engineer answer? Remember, I'm an ex-lawyer. No.
Okay.
Okay. There are special filters that do, but just the ones that you buy off the shelf.
Mr. Bohannon, I had the pleasure of listening to the EPA Administrator last week in DC, and she talked about this. So, I guess, you know, my question to you, and I guess it would be conjecture, if they had regulations in 1991, and Flint failed to follow those regulations and take those precautions, then basically they created their own situation. Is that, is that, get it in a nutshell?
The, I don't want to get into who created the problem. That's not my role here today, and there's lots of conjecture, but yes, it is a, it is a treatment issue and problem within their system. Does that answer your question?
Ms. Ross?
I'm just curious. Are there inexpensive home lead test kits? Because you said 1930, but, you know, Joe Blowmay had some pipes laying around in 1935 or 1940 and still, but, because we really didn't have that many inspectors back in 1930. So, are there any kind of a little reliable home test?
They'll call our customer water quality department. We can get them a lead test kit, and we can get it tested for them.
Okay, all right. Because I know in Park Hill, we've got some older houses in Argentos.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I just have a state, I wanted to answer his question. He said at the end of his presentation, "How'd he do?"
How'd he do?
Well, I've set up here for 15-plus years, and I've heard a lot of presentations from the water company. He did the best job of any of those I've heard in my last 15 years.
Don't give him a big head.
Because I was talking that fast and getting, I'm not done yet. That's the only thing I can tell you. Of all I've finished with, it's lead. I'm not done yet, unless you're going to kick me out of here.
All right, hustle up.
All right. Last thing, last thing I want to talk to you about is aging infrastructure, all right? We all have it. We know it's out there. It's an issue. It's an issue for the water utility, too. You know, the envi, the engineers have done a study and given America D+. Everybody's done studies and said there's, if you read the news, you know, different reports come up with how much water infrastructure needs to be replaced and how much needs to be done. We do a good job, okay? I can't say we do as good a job as we do on maintaining the lead out, keeping the lead out of your water, but we do a good job. But I just want to tell you kind of where we are, all right? This is an interesting graph because it tells you how much pipe was laid in our entire system by decade. As you can see, we're rocking along in the 1900s, and then we get to the 1950s and 60s, and then we blow up because there's big population growth, and then it starts kind of tailing off again, and then we get to the environmental, I mean, to the economic crisis in 2010 drops off immensely. But, the important thing to take away from this graph is that in 1900, 1910, and 1920, that was all what we call 100-year pipe. The pipe we're sticking in the ground, we thought would last for about 100 years. And then we get to the 1950s and 1960s and the 1970s, and we're looking at it, and you say, "Well, that's good, but, you know, economics are in play, and people are pushing, and developers want to do things." And so, we started using 50-year pipe. So, our 100-year pipe is coming of age, and our 50-year pipe is coming of all age, all at the same time, all right? Now, so you look at our different types of pipe in our system, and you see we have some ductile iron. It's, it's only about 17 years old. That's the new iron pipe that we're using, and it's about 100-year pipe, all right? We have cast iron, and that's the old stuff. That's the stuff that was put in in the 1900s, 1910s, 1920s, all right? And we have pipes that are still in the ground that are 114 years old. They still work, all right? We have PVC, galvanized iron, ACC, AC pipe, and that's all the various pipes. And we get down to a total, we have about 2,300 miles of pipe in our system, okay? So, we have some pipe. You go, "Okay, what's the big deal? How old the pipe is? As long as it's working, it's not a problem." So, then we start looking at breaks. And repairing pipes is no different than thinking about repairing your car, all right? If you look at the benchmark by the American Water Works Association, it says you should have pipes of about 33.6 pipe breaks per 100 miles. And if you look at ours, galvanized pipe is out the roof. And then next down is asbestos cement, or what we call AC pipe. And both of those exceed the AWB benchmarks for pipe, for broken lines per 100, broken, broken breaks per 100 miles. I'll spit it out here in a minute, all right? So, it's like your car. You fix it once, you say, "Okay, we'll repair it." Another repair, "Yeah, we'll repair it." Start repairing it, and repairing it, and repairing it, and at some point you get to it and you say, "You know what? It'd be cheaper just to get a new car." And that's how we look at pipes, too. We look at pipes very similar to the, the same way, all right? And part of the reason you do that and why we talk about whether it's 100-year pipe or 50-year pipe, it doesn't mean we need to run out and replace a piece of pipe that's immediately 100 years old. We need to analyze that pipe, analyze how many breaks it's going. But if you see here, once, the green is pipes per 100 miles if it's less than its expected life. And the blue is the breaks if it's greater than its expected life. And you see right off the bat that the, you start having a whole lot more breaks once it goes past its expected life. Where does that get us? Well, in our current budget and with our current expenditures, we replace about 4.1 miles of pipe per year. We have 2,300 miles of pipe. That means we expect our pipe to last approximately 500 years. Doesn't work. We need to increase the rate of replacement in our pipes. Whoops, I went too far. I brought show and tell. When I talk about replacing pipe because it starts getting breaks, this is a piece of two-inch galvanized pipe, the ones that we had up there with the highest break rate. And as you can see in just this short little section, we had four breaks in two feet. And at some point, you just have to stop fixing and stop putting a Band-Aid on it, a clamp, and replace the pipe. So, we've done a little analysis. This map shows the age of pipe, and all the red stuff is too old, okay? Orange stuff is too old by just a little bit. As you start getting lighter and lighter, yellow is okay, and green is fairly new. So, we've started focusing on the pipes that are too old and what we need to be working on to replace. In doing this analysis, we're looking at more than just the age of the pipe. Our engineers have been working hard, and they've looked at every stick of pipe, when it was put in, what it's made out of, what it serves, is it society critical? If this pipe breaks, does it shut down a school? Does it shut down the central business district? Does it shut down a hospital? Or does it shut down three houses at the end of a cul-de-sac? Not that the three houses at the end of the cul-de-sac aren't important, but that when you start ranking pipes of where we need to put our emphasis and where we need to put our priorities, we start giving pipe scores. And so, not only are we saying, "Okay, this pipe is 100 years old," or "This pipe is a 50 years old, and it's exceeded its expected life," we look at it and we say, "Is this pipe, is the societal cost of this break in this pipe critical such that we need to target it early and get on top of it now?" It's the difference between when you say, "I've got 100, I've got 150,000 miles on my 100,000-mile tires, and they're starting to show tread," and you go, "Can I drive to the grocery store, or can I drive cross-country?" And if you're going to drive cross-country, you don't want to be broken down on the road, and it's going to be critical that breaks, and you replace them. And if all you need is your third car for going to the weekend trips to the grocery store every once in a while, you might let it go a little bit longer. And we've gone through on every pipe and made that analysis and ranked things so that we can determine what we need to target and what we need to get to first, okay? There's just a sample of the guys down in the ditch, show, another show and tell picture of replacing a piece of pipe and doing work. So, $1.4 million, if we continue where we're doing, and you look at our pipe and you say, "Okay, where are we now?" We have $130 million worth of infrastructure that has reached its estimated useful life. If we keep replacing it, $1.4 million per year, you see what the line does over a period of time. If we increase that a little bit to 5 point, 5 million a year, we can pretty much hold the line fairly level. And if we go to $9.4 million per year, we can actually make the line go down. Now, I'm not in here saying we need to increase tomorrow to start spending $9.4 million per year in pipe replacement. What I'm saying is, we know pipes aren't going to last 500 years, and we need to increase our rate, and we need to do it targeted, and we need to do it specifically, and we need to look at what we're doing. And that's what your commissioners have been doing with our engineers' help to move forward. So, whoops, let's skip the slide. So, right now, we're looking within our budgets, looking within our models, and saying, "Okay, over time, how can we increase our capital replacement program by about another $4.4 million?" And we're doing that, and we're being effective in looking at doing, how doing that. Just to give you an idea of what we're doing here in North Little Rock right now, those less projects are what we're working on right now. That two-inch galvanized pipe is that pipe that I picked up for you, and it's a target of ours. That is where our highest break rate was, if you remember that graph. They're through the roof, and so that's where we're targeting, and those are areas that we're looking at. And we have a five-year capital plan to get through and start replacing all that two-inch galvanized pipe to get that break. A break is the most expensive pipe replacement there is. It means calling out crews in the middle of the night, paying overtime, all the things that go with it. If we can schedule it and plan it and replace that pipe, we save the ratepayers money and we save cost, okay? Just so you know what's coming up, we do have a bond issue that's coming up. You'll be get, we have a current one that we already gave notice about that's a refunding to save ratepayers money. We're estimating we're going to save about $250,000 a year by financing our '07 debt with the current bond issue coming up. But we'll have one later on, which is already calculated into our rates and into our capital structure to do a bond issue to improve, make some improvements at the Ozark Point Water Treatment Station, which hasn't been updated since the 60s. Treatment Station, which hasn't been updated since the sixties. Needs a little work. You got, the electrical systems are still the old crank ones, so we're going to do some improvements there. And I threw in there the I-30 bridge, just so you all know and to make people aware, our engineering estimates, if they move forward with that project, which I have no opinion on, but just know, we are planning on, if they move forward on it, it's going to cost about nine point five million dollars. We have pipes hanging on that bridge. We have to take those pipes down and then, once the new bridge is up, we have to put new pipes up. Now, those pipes have not reached the end of their useful life, but we don't, we can't just leave them standing out there in the middle of nowhere. So if they replace that bridge, know when they talk about all the numbers and everything, there's another nine point five million dollars in costs that we'll have to figure out how to pay and cover up and do with that. So, questions?
The twenty-three hundred miles of pipe is on your side of the meter.
Is on our side of the meter. That is correct.
How many miles of pipe are on my side of the meter that need to be looked at?
Haven't done that math yet, but if you figure, what, a hundred feet a yard and we have a hundred and twenty-two thousand accounts, so put a couple of zeros on the end of that and that tells you how many feet.
There's a lot of old pipe out there.
So, a lot of old pipe.
Other questions?
We in phase three or you done?
I'm done.
Good.
If you're done with me, I thank you all very much for the opportunity to be here. I've been around before and handed y'all business cards and what have you. If you have any questions, if you need anything, please don't hesitate to call me. I reenfor, reemphasize to our staff all the time, we are, we are a city utility effect, but we are in the customer service business. That is our job. So if we can help you, let us know and we'll be available when we can be.
Thank you, Ted. And also, our commissioners, thank you so much for what y'all do. We appreciate you watching over that for us.
Thank y'all very much.
You bet. Um, okay, we need citizens' public comment on agenda legislation items. We only have one.
Mayor, communications.
All right, let's do that. Anybody want to pull a communication?
Uh, just want to make notice of what, number four? Are we, do we need to prepare a resolution or are we going to vote on Mr. Beavers tonight?
I think we normally do that by letter, don't we? Uh, counsel?
Uh, I'm not sure. I'd have to research how we do those appointments. We've got, we've got too many boards for me to keep up with in my noggin.
Resolutions.
All right, yeah, we'll do it next time. Yeah, I've talked to John and he was excited about being a part of that.
Then I move we accept and file one through four on the communications.
About a second.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, we have Stefano Santa Maria, uh, will speak on R-1648. And you have three minutes, sir.
Um, I entered the rehab agreement to rehab my house at seven twenty-three West Twenty-Fourth Street, North Little Rock. And since then, you know, I hired all the licensed people, so I rewar, totally rewar the house, put brand-new plumbing, closed all the holes in the, in the house, you know, in the walls that they opened around the wires plus, plus whatever the damage was there from before. So, and all pass city inspection, I passed the framing inspection, I passed all the plumbing inspection, final inspection and also on electrical. So the only thing left to do was just, I was told, was just the TLC, you know, just make the house look good and painting, you know, and all that. Done all the painting, aluminum walls. So I was just in the very final stage. Of course, I had also a lot of problems with my contractor, ended up firing the one because he lost transportation, he got sick, he wouldn't come back to finish, so I had to hire another one, then I hired another one on top of that. But what happened is, the only thing left to do was the building inspection. And the inspector keeps coming back with new stuff to do. He gave me a little list of things to do and I thought that's all that was left, you know, I brought it here. Um, of things to fix, minor things, like put the numbers outside, you know, the house is missing, the house number, the vent for the dryer is missing, the spindles on the rails, you know, few little things like that, except for the hidden air system that we had a little discussion about. And then later, they keep, you know, so I fixed those things and they came back with something else new. So it's like I, I didn't have enough time, meaning, you know, I didn't have a list of things to do, done that, I was done, you know? They would keep asking me for other things. And in the end, you know, the very end, they even said the terrorists that wasn't sad around the house, also they thought it wasn't safe for Sandy, because that was, never heard any problems about that until just a couple of weeks ago. So, um, what I was, without, since I only have three minutes, without going more in detail, what I was asking besides the ninety or a hundred and eighty days to complete the, to extend my, my rehab, to complete the, the work, I have also a line, another licensed guy that gave me an estimate of what he thinks all needs to be done to finish it. But what I was requesting besides the extension was also, since the house is not an unsafe house, it wasn't even to start with. It's a very solid house that never had any structural problems. It only had, you know, the electrical, all that needed to be redone, the plumbing and all of that, so I've done all of that. All the walls are closed and everything. So it would help a lot if the house would be not habitable, meaning, you know, still need to put the dryer vent, I need to put the air conditioning, so it's not, I cannot put a renter there, but it's not unsafe. It's not unsafe anymore. I spent twenty-five thousand dollars since signed the agreement to fix this house, to pass all the, all the inspection except the last, the building one. So my request was, you know, of course, the ninety days, a hundred and eighty days, so I don't have to tear down a house, but after I've spent twenty-five thousand dollars to fix. But on top of that, I wanted to see if you can at least deem the house not, not unsafe, so doesn't need to be tore down. It just needs time to, you know, it, it needs to be fixed or I cannot rent it out, but at least it's safe from, from being turned down, because there's nothing unsafe about the house. You know, if it's missing a, the numbers on the door, it doesn't mean it needs to be turned down, or if it's missing a dryer vent, or even the air conditioning, you know, if the unit, the heat pump I put in there, if some, for somebody was okay, for other people not okay, we're still debating, even though the licensed contractor, even the last one I, I got the, an estimate from, he said it's okay like it is. So, but those minor things left to do, I would like at least to the house, requesting for the house to be considered safe, so I don't need, it doesn't need to be turned down anymore, but of course I cannot put any renters in there until the inspector is a hundred percent satisfied for whatever they want to come back with me.
Okay, thank you so much. Unfinished business?
Unfinished business, R-1630 Alderman Baxter.
I haven't heard otherwise, so please hold it.
Yeah, he asked to hold that.
Consent agenda?
Anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Consent.
How about a motion?
We've got a couple of, uh...
Yeah, I'll, I'll recognize them.
Some move.
Yeah, we've got a motion and a second.
Second.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, we have a couple of appointments tonight that I'm proud, Mike Moore, if you'll stand up, please, and Rick Thro. Um, I've known both of these gentlemen for forty or fifty years and it's certainly a pleasure that they've agreed to serve on the Civil Service Commission, which is probably one of our harder commissions to be on. So Mike and Rick, thank you so much for agreeing to serve and Betty, allegiance in the right direction. So thanks again. Um, I don't think Ian or Jill are, are here, uh, they're serving on our non-uniformed employee retirement board. Um, so, that's it on the consent agenda, I think.
Sir, new business?
Yes, please.
R-1646 Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the transfer and sell of automotive parts and supplies, inventories to Genuine Parts Company, DBA Napa Auto Parts. Anne?
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1647 Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution expressing the city's intent to hold on the sale or development of city-owned property in the downtown area for a hundred and twenty days.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Questions? On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1648 Alderman White, for consideration only.
Please call it.
A resolution approving a ninety-day extension to an agreement to rehabilitate property located seven twenty-three West Twenty-Fourth Street in the city of North Little Rock.
Have a motion?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Comments?
Um, why was this filed as a consideration only?
For me, it was because the legislation had already gone through, the rehab agreement had, had expired and asking for an additional time made it so I wasn't certain enough to sponsor it in any other way. And I had visited with the city attorney and we had talked about options and we wanted to give Mr. Santa Maria a chance to come before the council and ask for this extension.
I think the question is, are we setting a precedent here that we, where we don't want to go? Um, you know, if it's a twenty-five thousand dollar rehab and he had six months to do it, I mean, if he can't do it in six months, something, there's an issue there. And if we start doing it, then that six-month deadline doesn't mean anything anymore. So that's why I think that, that I'm hesitant in approving this. And if, if you're going to have a deadline, it's going to mean something. Counsel?
Uh, the point that I'd interject and ask the council to consider when you look at these is, uh, uh, first, to bring the matter before city council, I think any alderman who felt like it was meritorious to bring the extension of a rehab agreement to this, it's certainly your purview to do that, it's certainly your purview to say, hey, allow this person their chance to plead their case. I think that's a fair thing to do and to listen to them and to see what they've got to say. Uh, at the same time, we have to acknowledge that this was, I think, like, this particular structure was condemned in January of 2015. So that means that the house had gotten to such a state of disrepair by January of 2015 that we'd followed all the processes to go through, we declared it to be a public nuisance, that it was a nuisance to our community and needed to be removed at that point. And then sometime after that, we were able to negotiate a rehabilitation agreement uh, uh, with Mr. Santa Maria, who's been here tonight. So I think that occurred in June. And, uh, you know, the terms of those rehabilitation agreements are pretty strict and they're drafted that way for a reason, uh, because the structure's a public nuisance and the intent is to remove that public nuisance from the community. Once we've agreed to those terms and it's presented to city council and you've approved it, we don't feel that it's our position as staff to deviate from those terms. If, if he is to be alleviated from, uh, you know, his burden to, you know, mitigate this public nuisance, is for this council to alleviate that burden, it's not, that's not a staff decision anymore. Uh, so from our standpoint, the decision's been made that the property was a public nuisance, the decision was made about the proper process to abate that nuisance, to repair the property and abate that nuisance, and it didn't get done. It wasn't done in a timely fashion. Uh, I, Mr. Santa Maria has said, you know, he's hired people, he's had some trouble, he feels like he's gotten close to the finish line, but he's not there. But our time elapsed, I believe, in December. Uh, if, if it's the discretion of this city council to afford him some more time, then certainly, uh, we're going to abide by however you direct us to proceed. Uh, on the other hand, if this city council chooses not to extend more time, then we will proceed with the process for removing the structure. That's why we've got those rehab agreements in place, it gives us the authority to do that.
Mr. Taylor?
Well, uh, looks to me that if the time expired back in December, this is March, almost April, we already had ninety days. So if we give another ninety days, that'd be...
We're looking at a year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Witcher?
Perhaps I misunderstood him, uh, with his, with his inspection list. Uh, I thought I heard him say, the inspector had come through, given him a list, and when he went, came back to re-inspect, he added additional items. Uh, you know, I, I have a concern about that. Uh, you know, on, once you get the list and, and you agree to rehab and the inspector says, you know, this is what you've got to do, uh, that should be it.
Uh, Tom, you want to comment on all this? I mean, it's certainly easy to, uh, to blame all this on, on us.
I just want to make a comment.
Have a little comment, too.
This is not the first time I've heard that, that they get a list of things to be done, then the inspector comes back out and add additional things that need to be done. This is not my first time hearing that.
Tom?
We don't, my office doesn't do the inspection. This is, this was done, once, once y'all condemn the property, it goes to planning. And when this was, when this was started, he had a contractor and so, and I, I'll let Sean speak more about this, but it's like building a new house. The city doesn't come out and tell you everything to do. That's where you have a contractor and your contractor is licensed and bonded and then you rely on him to do what needs to be done so that the house is built up to code and make all the repairs. There's no way that we can go in a house. I couldn't go in and look behind your walls until you tear them out. And that's what contractors are for. And I mean, you know, about everything you do in construction, there's more to it than what you start on the front end. So we don't go out and, and give them a list. I mean, and like I said, Sean could probably better explain it, but, but once we do it, it goes, just like building a new house, it goes over to planning, you have your plumber come out, bring it up to code, your electrician bring it up to code. And so for, to say that we go out and give them a list that needs to be done, from that standpoint, it's, it's not. Now, ours is a little different because we're doing, we're doing minimum housing standards, but for this to be under a permit, that's why we use the contractor. That was, and he had a contractor on the front end that submitted this bid.
Any other comments?
I just want to kind of quote you, Mayor. You mentioned that if we do approve this, we're setting a precedent that we might be, uh, uncomfortable to live with going forward. I mean, if we, if we, if we approve this, I, I just feel like there are going to be lined up out there to ask for extensions when we start condemning houses in the future and if not some that we've already condemned. So I'm, I'm worried about us setting the precedent here and opening up a can of worms that we'd really be uncomfortable with going forward.
Any other comments? Mr. Taylor?
I mean, I, I don't have an issue with setting a precedent. I don't think we'll be setting a precedent. I think that we look at these, these on a case-by-case basis and, and just make a decision on whether we want to move forward based on, on, uh, the progress that the applicant has made. And, you know, when looking at this, this particular case, he's already had ninety days and we're still in the same place. So another ninety days would be six months and that's just a year to get the job done. So that's, that's my, my heartburn with it.
On the motion.
Motion, Ross?
No.
White?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Fauch?
No.
Height?
No.
Witcher?
No.
The move to adopt spelled.
Thank you. Let's go to the next one.
R-1649 Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with a Plassey County tax collector against certain real property located eleven oh-nine East Second Street in the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing on eleven oh-nine East Second. Anyone here to speak on eleven oh-nine East Second? Seeing none, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-1616 Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance adopting the 2010 ADA standards for accessible design, declaring emergency first reading.
Move, suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend the readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.[1669.83]
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-1617, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the 2016 quota ordinance, ordinance number 8790, for the North Rock Fire and Parks and Recreation Departments, declaring emergency first reading.
Move suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend the readings?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-1617, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the 2016 quota ordinance, ordinance number 8790, for the North Rock Fire and Parks and Recreation Departments, declaring emergency first reading.
Move suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend the readings?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion?
Ross?
Hold on. Ms. Ross, do you have a question?
I just clarify a few things, you know, because we had this once before and then we held it and we've made some changes on this as far as the...
Harry, you want to come up?
The three...
Or Betty?
Or Chief Murphy. As far as the three captains and lieutenants, I'm just clarifying so that everyone will know exactly what we're doing, that the 24 positions are temporary positions from the grant funding. Now, the captain and the lieutenant, those cannot be paid for the grant, out of the grant, and those are not being paid out of the grant. That's correct. That's why I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. And the captain and the lieutenant positions, there is the possibility that that promotion could go back to where they were, correct, after two years if we do not have the funding?
Yes, that's what's provided for in the resolution. So unless the City Council acts to extend those positions, right now, we would forecast that those would go away. The timing does coincide with the grant funding because we have to have some kind of structure to be able to supervise those 24 firefighters that are coming in. But then if, you know, so coincidentally in time, if those grant funds go away, these positions would also, those employees wouldn't lose their job. They'd revert to the jobs they held before they were elevated to those temporary slots.
And then this one is for Chief Murphy, because I did speak with him today as far as, you know, if we do not have this funding in two years to continue these jobs, then basically, we're going to have to have some cuts somewhere, which, you know, we have a new fire station, we want to make sure that we maintain that. So kind of ballpark figure, what was that to, for the salaries, for the additional, and then the three captains, three lieutenants, we needed that for Station 11, correct?
Correct.
So was it like 1. something million to staff that?
Well, that was to maintain employment for all 24. We had about 1.3 figures. We also, in addition to that, our conversation today, we're going to reapply. We have a three-year extension on military that we're going to apply for. And then fiscal year 2018, we're going to reapply. And I feel pretty good that we're going to get to continue on with these employees.
Yes, I just want to make sure that we...
We're also being very frugal with our budget.
Yes, you are.
And looking ahead, trying to plan on keeping these folks.
I just wanted to make up there.
But the new lieutenants and the new captains are aware of this, and I believe that we're asking them to sign a letter that, so that they understand what might happen. And Lynn's out there and Alan, everybody understands that, so.
That's correct.
Okay.
We don't want it to happen, but...
Right. Hopefully it doesn't.
Hopefully it doesn't.
Okay, on the motion?
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
This concludes New Business.
Thank you. Public comment section now is Mr. William Randy Mann. Mr. Mann, three minutes, please, sir, if possible.
Mayor Smith, members of council, I myself, I'm William Randy Mann. I am a city employee. I work for North Little Rock Electric Department at the Murray Hydroelectric Plant. I moved to North Little Rock just a little over 11 years ago. And when I did, I started attending church at Cornerstone Worship Center there on Campbell Road in the Rose City area. And that's what I'm here to kind of talk about. I met my wife there, Sue Ann Rogers Strickland. We got married. That has now been our home church for a while. A little history on the church. The pastor that we had there for a long time had to resign, and the church was left without a pastor. Our now current pastor, Pastor Gary Bearden there, had another church in the Rose City area that he needed to expand. By his graciousness, he worked with our district and now merged the two churches together. And so what we've done in the past, thanks to his guidance and a lot of hard work with church members, we've grown in size. We've increased a lot of our departments, especially working on our children's church and things like that. Last year, we had an Easter egg hunt, and we had about 3,000 or so eggs. We had a good turnout. We've affiliated ourselves with the fire department, the police department. We have invited them out to eat with us at different times. We've had luncheons and breakfasts and stuff. We've worked hard to become a part of the Rose City community. With, under Brother Bearden's leadership, we've expanded a lot of things. This year, we're planning on a community Easter egg hunt. We have already now accumulated over 7,000 eggs, which we will graciously spend several hours stuffing them with candy in the next week or two. So any help would be appreciated on that. But what I'm here for just simply is this, we'd like this to be known as a community Easter egg drop. And I specifically address Ms. Robinson and Mr. Taylor. We are in war, too, in the Rose City area. All that we're asking is for the blessing of the City Council and that when you're out in the public, if you're meeting with other churches or just different groups in the community, let them know that we want to be a community church. Last year, we cooked over 400 hot dogs and 150 hamburgers, and everything was gone. We're planning for twice that size this year. We've been giving away bicycles, other gifts and stuff to kids in the community. We plan on the same thing this year. We want to be a church that gives back to the community. There's no charge for anything the kids and families come for. The eats, refreshments, everything is there, paid for by the church. So we just ask for your blessings and your help in promoting this. And we would also like to say that in our area, if there anything else comes up that the council members need help with, contact our church. We'd be glad to work with you and glad to help you.
Mr. Mann, if you will hang just a little bit when the meeting's over with. Our communications director is in the building. His name is Nathan Hamilton, and if you'll talk to him. Any program like this that's open to the public, we can help you promote through our Facebook pages and all that good kind of stuff. So if you'll wait and talk to him and get him the information that you want him to have, then he'll help you promote it. Thank you, sir. And we appreciate what you do. Pastor Bearden, thank you so much. Ms. Ross?
The name of the church? We didn't catch the name of the church.
Cornerstone?
Cornerstone.
Cornerstone. It's located at 301 Campbell Road.
I got that.
That cuts across between the England Highway and Lynch Drive.
Yeah. Thank you so very much.
And is that where the egg hunt is, too?
Yes. We have what is about seven acres, about 11 acres there at the back that we will have mowed or let grow up enough to have plenty of places to hide.
Well, good. Well, we appreciate you opening that up to the public for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Mr. Richards?
My name is John Richards. I have a problem that has been there since 1014. I'm talking to the audience because I've been here so much, I cannot get anything out of these people here. Maybe you can talk to your representatives. Maybe you can help me to restore my road to my family cemetery. The family cemetery was set up in the early 1800s. This apartment complex at 46th Street and Smokey Lane has put sod over the road, a city road, and a sprinkler system there. Muddy times like this past rain, there's no way we could visit it. I have been here every meeting. I have brought my relatives. They're kind of giving up, but not me. I'll be here next time. I saw in the paper where there's $2 million worth of surplus that the city of Little Rock, uh, North Little Rock has. All I'm asking for is a two-lane blacktop, 70 yards, two-lane blacktop, to my family cemetery.
Watch your time.
Justin Akery did a article on TV back in 14, Seven on Your Side. There has been no results. I can't get any results here. Thanks for your time. Please, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City council members, public comment. Ms. Robinson?
I just want to reiterate a comment I made earlier. Numerous times since I've been in office, I've heard people say, "The inspector came out, he gave me a list of things to do. I completed that list." The inspector would come back out or came back out, and he added some additional things that I needed to do. And they've said to me, "What do I do?" So I'm looking at the city attorney, because in my opinion, when the inspector comes out and he gives you a list of things to do and you complete that list, it should be over and done with. So what am I missing here? Help me to understand.
I'd have to give you my left-hand, right-hand argument, because I'd say, on the one hand, I'd absolutely agree, you know, when somebody's trying to get a job done and you get a punch list, something that tells you to do, you want to be able to rely on that.
Correct.
And to do those things. And then once those things that you were told to correct are completed, that you have confidence that you're done. You're done. You're finished and you've gotten it across the finish line. Let me give you my, on the other hand, argument. On the other hand, when we have inspectors out there who are inspecting especially construction for Arkansas State Fire Prevention Code and things of that nature, those are safety issues. And if they see something that's a safety issue, just because they missed it the first time, it still needs to be done. It needs to be done right. Now, it's shame on us for not finding it the first time, because I think that's what's incumbent upon our inspectors, is find it the first time. But if they don't find it the first time, it doesn't mean it doesn't need to be fixed because our businesses and our homes and this community need to be safe.
I would offer to you, Ms. Robinson, that if this happens again, just immediately, tell them to call me or you call me and give me their name and number. We have complaints from time to time, and we try to answer every one of them. I'm not going to say that sometimes we don't make a boo-boo, but I bet eight out of 10, there's a reason for what happened. And you need to know what that reason is, and so does our citizens, because they want to think, like I said earlier, it's easy to attack us because we usually don't fight back much. But we don't let a complaint go unlooked at. So if you'll call me or have them call me, Sean and Jim Breilly, who's head of our inspectors, and Chief Bradley, you know, we'll look at this probably once a month. We'll chase down a complaint on inspections.
Thank you.
Don't mind at all. Mr. Fauch?
Excuse the coughing episode tonight. That's a little perk of what I'm going to mention. As many of you may already know, I was diagnosed with myelofibrosis, the common name is bone marrow cancer, almost two years ago. There's different variants of this. There is no cure for my type of cancer. It's a progressive disease. As time goes on, it'll continue to wear me down. Though I'm now able to perform the bulk of my duties as your alderman, it's going to become more increasingly difficult to continue at this level in the future. I've been asked to run, but I cannot, in good faith, go to the residents of Ward III and ask them for their vote in the upcoming election when all probability, I won't be able to complete the full term. Therefore, I am announcing that I will not be running for reelection. And I'm doing this now to allow those who think they want to come out and run for this office, the opportunity to talk with their families and backers, and let's get the best person up there for Ward III and what we can do for North Little Rock. And I thank you for all the support from all the folks out there.
Ms. Ross?
I just want to say something. I hope I don't tear up. Bruce is at everything. I mean, the meetings that we go to, the numerous meetings that we go to, he's there. You know, I'm complaining because I didn't have a nap that day or something, and Bruce is tugging along. I mean, he's just checking right in there, and I've got huge respect for you, Bruce. Huge respect.
Absolutely. Ditto on that. Mr. Witcher?
Ditto to you, Bruce.
Yep. Ditto times seven.
We appreciate you. I do have a couple of comments, Mayor. I had mentioned that I'd been in Washington last week with National League of Cities. A number of the issues that we covered were tax-exempt municipal bonds, and it appears as though Congress is not going to take that tool away from us while, I'm not sure that we use that that often. It is a good tool for planning and for investors and for cities to use. As you all well know, the National League supported in Congress as they passed a highway transportation bill. Now, they only funded three of the five years of it, but it will offer at some point in time more latitude for cities to be involved with that money as it comes down. To date, most of that money has been dictated either through the State Highway Department and/or our local MPOs. So, let me see. The third thing is, we've talked about Internet Fairness Act. While it does not appear as there will be any movement on that prior to the election in November, there is a distinct possibility, very narrow possibility, that it might be taken up. The votes are in the Senate. There are 300 people that have signed on in the House. The issue is getting it out of the chairman's hands and getting it to the House floor. When I told the mayor this, he said, "I'll believe it when I see it." And so, you know, we've been down this road before. The last thing that we talked about from the Department of Education and Health was home medications and opiates. Well, that's not a big deal in Arkansas right now. It is northeast and out in the west. And Chief, you're sitting out there, one of the things that they're beginning to do in those regions is the first responders are carrying vials or epi pens when they get someone who is overdosed, they can give them that medication immediately. And I'd appreciate if you would look into seeing if we would be interested in doing something like that, you know, for that matter, you know, maybe even the police department, too. There are, I understand, some grants that would help us with that. I don't know how often those epi pens have to be replaced. I'm sure they have a life on them, but if we can save one person's life, it would be worth it. So that's it from DC.
Thank you, Mr. Witcher. Thanks for representing us up there last week, too. We appreciate you watching our back while the rest of us are here. Mr. Taylor?
I just wanted to make a comment to Bruce's comment that, you know, he and I, we haven't always seen eye to eye on a lot of issues, but that's indicative of this body, and that's why, that's the makeup of this body. We won't see eye to eye on a lot of issues, but I have a tremendous amount of respect for Bruce and all of his grit and how he is kind of, how he's worked through his issue and stayed, you know, with his nose to the grind and just continued to serve the people of Ward III. So Bruce, we love you and we appreciate you, man, and God be with you.
Thank you.
Any others?
I want to make a comment. We passed out a map showing our operation focus. I told you we were going to try to do two this year. We've done Bear and Cross, and we're going to Rose City. I see Dennis is out there in the back. Dennis, make sure you get one of these. You already got one? Rose City's a little bit larger than the Bear and Cross section that we're working on, so it's going to take us two weeks. So you'll see, the first week is April the 4th through the 8th, the second week, 11th through the 15th. We will carry the same proposal and philosophy that, no tolerance. And I believe that police department, fire department, public works, street sanitation is all ready to go come April the 4th. So we look forward to as much success there as we had in Bear and Cross. How about a motion?
I have one more.
Ms. Ross?
We've been asking for a focus for Levy for, what, five years now? So can it be the next one?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We need to identify what area you want so that we can start...
Oh, we've got it. I've got the map.
Get with Dan. And Dan, if you'll get with Debbie and Beth and let's identify that, maybe we can get it in before the fall. Okay? Okay, motion? In a second, do we have that? Second. Second.
Let's adjourn.
All right. There we go.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.